Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 5th, 2018. I'd ask that you please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we are ever mindful of the enormous powers of nature and we are thankful for the great efforts being put forth by our city departments in both public safety and public works in keeping our streets safe and also passable for traffic. It's an ongoing challenge, but we are, I think, rising to the occasion and we are just thankful for we had such dedicated crews with us. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil on defense of the liberties of the United States of America and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go forth. As always, we want to ask for direction and guidance and understanding as we act on the items of business before us and we are ever thankful that we are in a place here today in which we can represent and serve such a grand community as we all live and enjoy and raise our families. So, we thank for all these blessings and we just ask for a great direction in the days ahead. Amen. Alderman Millay, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien. Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Millay.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that 12 of the 14 elected members of the City Council are present in the county for weeks, so we have the necessary forms to conduct business. Moving to item number four, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have anything this evening?
I do not.
Anybody else? All right. Moving to item number five, I have a request from Chief Dyke for the appointment of three new paid-on-call recruits to the Paid-on-Call Fire Department Division of the Batavia Fire Department and those individuals are Sergio Rodriguez, Ryan Thomas, and Antonio Windbush. I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
So moved.
Motion in second.
Second.
Motion in second. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack. Aye. Stark. Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Oh, they're okay, very good. Guess what we'll do is if I can have the three gentlemen who were just so named and acted on by the City Council come forward and we gotta have you up here in the center of the room.
Sure. And council members, I'd just like to introduce our three new paid-on-call candidates and thank you for approving their appointment. First is Sergio Rodriguez. He lives in Elgin. He is a basic operations firefighter and also an EMT. He has experience working for Superior Ambulance and currently works for the Burlington Fire Department, so we're glad to have him onboard with us with his experience. Next to him is Ryan Thomas. He lives in Wheaton. He's also a basic operations firefighter. He is a paramedic and he works at Edwards Hospital as emergency room tech, so he has a lot of also firefighting and EMS experience. And finally is Anton Windbush. He lives in Naperville and had a fun commute here to Naperville this evening. He's a firefighter too also and also a recent graduate from paramedic school, so he's a paramedic and he works at Hartstown, which is a restaurant distribution, center large one in the Chicagoland area. And we're really glad to have him onboard and have their interest here to Batavia to help serve and protect our citizens and community.
On behalf of the City Council, I thank you all for coming and what I need to have you do is we'll get you on TV, because I need to have you come up here in the center of the room so we get you on these cameras right here. And while I'm at it, I'll do all three of you at once, so make it very quick. You raise your right hand and repeat after me and I state your name.
I am Juan Windbush.
Have you been appointed?
I've been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
The counties of Kane and Page.
The counties of Kane and Page.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
No, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
No, I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
Of the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I have copies, they can have those. I'll hand them out.
Okay, moving to item number six, which is our consent agenda. Alderman Atack?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for October 10th, October 11th, November 14th, November 28th, December 5th, 2017, and January 9th, 2018. Historic preservation commission minutes from December 11th, 2017, and January 8th, 2018. Approvals, January 26th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $861,169.36. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,552,285.89. City council minutes for January 16th, 2018. Resolution 18-09-R authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract for 2018 West Side Property Maintenance with WA Management Incorporated for $55,500. Resolution 18-11-R authorizing purchase of 2018 Ford F-250 trucks from Landmark Ford for $67,083. Resolution 18-15-R authorizing the mayor to execute a petition to the ICC for installation of a new railroad spur crossing on Hubbard Avenue. Resolution 18-14-R authorizing preliminary engineering supplement one for Prairie Street reconstruction with Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated for the amount not to exceed Resolution 18-17-R authorizing the mayor to execute the application to the IEPA for low-interest loan for storm sewer separation. Resolution 18-13-R approving a new rate for the general legal services with Drundle and Jansen's Law Group. Resolution 18-20-R Batavia 34KV rebuild projects line design proposal, main substation to Paramount Substation. Resolution 18-19-R authorizing the execution of tax order number 15 with WBK for Area Three Water Main Phase Two Engineering. I move that we approve the consent agendas read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack. Aye. Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agendas, approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. That's one of the first times ever in some time we've not had somebody we know who was next on the agenda.
Wow. She might be writing.
So, moving forward then to the Batavia Chamber Report. We're very honored that we have Executive Director Howie Dyke in there with us.
Hello. I will warm up the microphone this evening. Just wanted to say thank you to all who attended our Inspire Awards event, especially to Scott Salvati for emceeing the evening for us and Mayor Schelke for his kind words about our event. We gave away many awards to local businesses for their contribution to our economic development in Batavia, whether that was from a new building or a reconstruction add-on, something to a office building, a retailer, commercial, industrial, you name it. We gave somebody an award in those categories over last week. We had record attendance. It was a great event, pretty much packed the Nagel Emporium at Abbey Farms and had a great Citizen of the Year that we honored in Marcia Boyce from Boyce Body Works. So, thank you all again for attending. We have, I'm gonna mention four events that we have coming up. We have our Women in Business Luncheon on February 13th. The discussion will be on keys to successful public speaking. I obviously will be attending and not presenting, so I'll have something to learn in the area of public speaking and that will be at Eagle Brook. We have networking it on February 21st from 5 until 7:00 and we will be at Denny's this time, so if you have not been yet, please join us and try some of their more evening-type foods. I'm sure you could still get Grand Slam while you're there, but maybe have something else from their menu this time. But as usual, we are also collecting for a local nonprofit and this month we're collecting for the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. Next, we have HR programming on recruiting and hiring, tips from a recruiter. That's on February 22nd at 7:30 a.m. Again, we've partnered with the Valley Industrial Association to put on our HR programming this year, so we will be at the Valley Industrial Association just past the Campana Building on Route 38. Eggs Benefit is our, we do it a couple of times a year. It's just a welcome and open house to our members, new and established, to come and learn about how to make the most out of your Chamber membership or your investment in the Batavia Chamber. So, if you know anyone that's interested in becoming a member of the Chamber but doesn't know what we do, please have them join us, though I must mention that our seating is limited to 40 because we host it at Water Street Studios and we will be having food by Enticing Cuisine. We already have over half of the seats filled, so if you're interested, please let us know sooner rather than later. That's about it from the Chamber right now. If there's anything that I can do to help you or if there's anything going on in local business you think I can do to help promote Batavia, don't hesitate to ask.
I would just note that I think Howie and her staff did an exceptionally good job this year with the Inspire Awards. It was well-attended, a lot of Batavia people there, a lot of people from out of town who were there because they own Batavia businesses and were very interested. So, you had a packed house down there and I was just very pleased to be part of Batavia that night because you certainly made the town shine.
Well, thank you very much.
And what was again, what's the date of the Denny's party out there?
That is on February 21st from 5 till 7:00.
Okay. Just gotta write this on my calendar.
I appreciate that. Come on down.
Anybody else in the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to a presentation by Patty Smith on the Duquesne Abate and I don't think Patty's made it here yet. That's a nice event. I don't know how many of you are aware of what we do on that one, but we have this huge motorcycle race in town and the last three years, one of the participants in the motorcycle race has been no other than Governor Roner with his Illinois State Police Escort. And then we have, they all bring a toy and they stack them all up down at the VFW and then they invite the various groups that are involved in toy distribution, including ours, to come down and get a fair share of the toys. So, it does generate a lot of toys for our Christmas toy program, which is, I can say, it's always extremely well-run. We don't have many problems with it. It just, there's about a 10 or 15-minute time period we shut down Wilson Street and let them all run from out on Van Ortrick down to River and then everybody goes south into River and that's kind of the end of it. It starts out in Elburne and meanders through Kane County before it gets to us, but nice event, so hopefully Patty will get here. If not, she'll be here at some other time. All right, moving then to item 10, which is ordinance 18-14, Adoption of Prevailing Wage Act. Who's got this one?
Oh, I do.
Alderman Atack?
This act requires the city of Batavia to investigate and ascertain the prevailing rate of wages is defined by the Act for laborers, mechanics, and other workers in the locality of the city of Batavia doing construction work. The city of Batavia has investigated and ascertained the latest Kane County prevailing wage and is effective September 1, 2017. So, I move that we approve the ordinance 18-14, the 2018 prevailing wage adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in second for the approval of the Prevailing Wage Act. Kirk, please call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Okay, moving to 12, which is Resolution 18-10-R authorizing purchase of the 2018 John Deere 444 Wheel Loader from John Deere Retail, sales in amount of $141,278.71. Alderman Wolf?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Salvati for the approval of Resolution 18-10-R authorizing the purchase of the John Deere 2018 Wheel Loader. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Okay, moving to 12, which is Resolution 18-10-R authorizing purchase of the 2018 John Deere 444 Wheel Loader from John Deere Retail, sales in amount of $141,278.71. Alderman Wolf?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Salvati for the approval of Resolution 18-10-R authorizing the purchase of the John Deere 2018 Wheel Loader. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Move to 13, Approval of Demolition Certificate of Appropriateness for 27 North Prairie Street. Who's got this one?
I've got it, Your Honor.
Alderman Brown?
So, this ordinance or this approval and the next one coming up behind it are both for the same block of North Prairie Street. There's two properties there that the Park District currently owns. They've owned them both for over 10 years, I believe, and they see the need to increase the parking in that area for their existing facility. One of the buildings, they've been renting out as a residence. The other one, they've been using as a teen center, but they haven't used it as a teen center for quite a few years now as they found it to be too expensive to maintain and keep up. So, they have gone through the appropriate demolition process with the HPC as far as getting the certificate of appropriateness. They held the two meetings with them. They did go to the Committee of the Whole for approval there. Obviously, they've gotten the approval from both HPC and the Committee of the Whole, so I would move that we approve the certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of 27 North Prairie Street. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for 27 North Prairie Street. Any discussion? You know, I would just note, I have received over the last several years a few complaints from the businesses on the south side of Wilson Street at Prairie that on times when the east side center gets overwhelmed with activity there, that everybody kind of lurches over and takes up their parking for their business. So, I would suggest that there is, and I've also had people on State Street east of Prairie comment to me that all of a sudden their streets get totally clogged or driveways blocked and whatever, like cars wanting to get in to do something at the east side center. So, I appreciate the willingness of the Park District to look at this and understanding that there is a parking problem over there on occasion. I guess the parking problem, as I've heard some of my predecessors say in many past years, that's a nice thing to have in your community is when you have a parking problem in your downtown because it points out that there's a lot of people down here wanting to do stuff. And I guess that's one of the things we should be all about. So, I really appreciate the Park District's willingness to take this on and do this, so that's my two cents on both of them, but. No other discussion? Kirk, call the roll on the motion.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Moving to 14, which is Approval of Demolition Certificate of Appropriates for 13 North Prairie Street. Alderman Brown?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for 13 North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Moving to 14, which is Approval of Demolition Certificate of Appropriates for 13 North Prairie Street. Alderman Brown?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for 13 North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Millay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-no's, two absents. Moving to 14, which is Approval of Demolition Certificate of Appropriates for 13 North Prairie Street. Alderman Brown?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for 13 North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.[1441.11]
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for thirteen North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion is approved, twelve yes, no, no, two absent. Moving to fourteen, which is approval of demolition certificate of appropriateness for thirteen North Prairie Street. Alderman Brown?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for thirteen North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion is approved, twelve yes, no, no, two absent. Moving to fourteen, which is approval of demolition certificate of appropriateness for thirteen North Prairie Street. Alderman Brown?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the demolition certificate for thirteen North Prairie Street. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion is approved, twelve yes, no, no, two absent. Moving to the Administrator's Report.
Okay, tomorrow on our Committee of the Whole agenda, the only agenda item that we have is the discussion of our current strategic plan. It's an opportunity to look at our existing plan and to have a discussion about if there are any particular ways in which we think that that needs to be updated or changed, and maybe get your feedback on the structure of all of it. And included in that might be if at a future meeting you want to get some feedback from staff about ways in which they've accomplished the things that exist in the current strategic plan, and maybe some suggestion of things that we might do to alter that. And it's important to look at that now, both because of the exercise that we're going to be going through in the first half of this year at looking at the impact of the Sam's Club closure on our budget, but then also we want to utilize this document to inform our plans that we make for two thousand and nineteen as well. So, it's just kind of to take a temperature as to how we feel about that current strategic plan and if anything needs to be changed. We received, the One Washington Place has submitted their revised petition, and so that is in community development right now, and it's actually going to be on the schedule for the Historic Preservation Commission for Monday, February twelfth. So, things are moving ahead with that. Also Prairie Commons, we have all of those plans in community development, and those are currently under review. Sierra Trading Company is expected to open in early to mid-March right now. Also, yesterday in the evening, there was an accident on Route thirty-one, and it took out one of the rapid-flashing beacons on the east side of the street at McKee. And so, the problem that this poses is that the Federal Highway Authority has come to the conclusion that we're not going to be allowed to replace anything that is either needs repair or at the end of its life, and this appears to be in both of those categories. We can't operate the rapid-flashing beacons on merely one side of the street, and so we're going to have to disable the rapid-flashing beacon that's on the west side of the street at this point. And then we have, as a matter on the February thirteenth Committee of the Whole agenda, a discussion about what additional measures we might need to take at this point with regard to that flashing beacon. Is there any questions that people have about that or concerns? It's the way we're proceeding at this point, and we can discuss it in more detail perhaps next Tuesday. And then finally, of course, everyone on council was notified of a security incident that we experienced last week, which was, we were the victim of a phishing scam on the day that, the first day that tax returns could be filed. There was an email that appeared to come from me, addressed to someone in the organization asking for W two information, and unfortunately, that person responded. And so, we have provided notice to all of those affected. It doesn't affect any residents. It only affects anyone who would have received a two thousand and seventeen W two. We sent out information to all affected. We've hosted in-person meetings with all employees to inform them about how the incident happened, what we're doing immediately to assist them and protect their information, and also what we're going to be doing in the future to prevent anything like this from happening again. Immediately, we are going to provide credit monitoring and identity theft protection for at least a period of one year. Notices went out to affected individuals, how to sign up for that. If any of you have any problems going through that process, do let me know. We're also paying for individuals to put in effect a freeze on their credit report, and that costs about ten dollars for someone to do that, so we're reimbursing for the cost of that. And as well, we are going to engage live training for everybody whose job requires them to utilize a computer, and that training will be live every other year and an online version in the off-years. And as well, it will become part of our onboarding process for anybody who is coming in the organization before they start using that computer. They're going to be trained to the same level as other employees about cybersecurity. It's a very unfortunate event. The I T department trains us constantly. They're constantly testing us by sending us messages that come from a third party that try to trick us into clicking on things inside an email. So, it's not that there hasn't been a vigilant amount of trying to keep this in the forefront of people's minds, but people make mistakes, and that's what's happened in this case. But there are still more things that we can do to try to prevent this from recurring, and that's training, and that's looking at our policies, and it's looking at the way that we handle information. And so, we'll also be creating an Information Security Committee to look at all of those issues and make us a better organization in reaction to what has happened. Does anyone have any questions? That's all I have today unless somebody has questions about particular projects.
Any questions?
A couple things. Any update with the Walmart Real Estate Group in terms of?
We haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. And then, second, Project Moon Unit?
Yes, that we continue to communicate with them about that project, so it's still live.
Well, we did have a conversation with Walmart last week about the gas station.
Yes, and that's good news.
Yeah, and they are in the process of transferring it over from Sam's Club to Walmart, and that will be reopening sometime near the end of the month.
Right, February twenty-sixth, I think they said. It's very good news.
Anybody else? Thank you.